All right, let's uh call the order of the meeting, uh Bay Saint Louis City Council Meeting recessed. Uh, date is March twenty-four twen- two thousand twenty-four, time is five forty. Um, first order, is any amendments to this uh agenda?
Mr. Craig, March twenty-sixth.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, March twenty-sixth, my glasses are backwards.
Hey, I might need them.
Okay, uh, let's go to the first thing, uh consent agenda, item A, motion to approve agreement with K L R Consulting for grant writing professional service at a rate of thirty-five dollars per hour for the remainder of the twenty twenty-four fiscal years, there not to exceed on that?
I think it's five thousand dollars.
Okay, not to exceed five thousand?
Motion.
Hmm? Oh, no, I'm gonna go each one. Um, uh, s- s- someone made a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman DeSalvo to approve K S L, uh, K L R Consulting for grant writing professional services at a rate of thirty-five dollars per hour for the remainder of the twenty twenty-four fiscal year, not to exceed five thousand dollars. Uh, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Reed, uh, any discussion?
Yeah, just a quick comment, I think Mi- uh, Mike, I think you had sent um, just kind of a what's been generated thus far and Chief as well, thank you for sending that, so I think it's roughly right now at about one hundred and eighteen thousand in grants that has been brought in since this contract was initiated, so it seems like it's going in a good direction, I think this will be just a preface, this will also continue not only for the police department, but also any other grants that we're seeing, that might benefit the city.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
That's gonna be my question, just look at the fire department and maybe see if anything out there for them.
That as well, and often reckons well, and also that we're looking at here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No discussion, both motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes six zero. Uh, number B, motion to approve Lois and Best quote for purchase of a new pump uh, for the Turner Street Lift Station from Bear Electric, an amount of twelve thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and no cents. And motion approved.
Motion.
Motion, Councilman DeSalvo, have a second?
Second.
Second, man, Count- uh, Councilman Zimmerman, uh, any discussion?
And there is two quotes on that.
Discussion on that, yeah, on the second quote was a, I mean, they were comparable, very, very close, very, very close. Um. One was a little better than the other, or?
Yeah, it's twelve thousand versus, I'm looking eighteen thousand?
Um, I got it.
No, I thought it was within like, within like a hundred and something dollars.
Yeah, it, it's very close on that, um. It should be, they, they sent the quotes in, I don't have them.
Yeah, I know.
They're, uh.
You got it. Twelve thousand are quote, that's Bear.
Twelve thousand five hundred and thirty-eight is Bear.
Right there. I'm gonna blow this up, I know it's hard to see.
Three fifty-eight is what we have on here. Twelve thousand three fifty-eight.
Yeah. My glasses too. My glasses.
There's a difference of eight dollars?
Yours and Derek Gary's, but.
Difference of what, Gary, you got both?
There's a day, difference of eight dollars on it.
To be honest, I can't even see that.
I can't, I think that's what it is.
I'm looking at Ben- Ben- Ben Nudie.
I know it was very close, um.
I know it was a little more, I thought it was like four hundred, twelve thousand four hundred something versus twelve thousand three hundred something. About a hundred dollars difference, I didn't know if there was any benefit to Bear over Bay, uh.
Well, Bear's the one that pulls it and, and has also done some other work on it, that's, that's who they, you know, call, but it's good, starting to get both prices now, you know, and all, and um, Ronnie is looking, you know, some alternative things we can start doing.
And there was the, so with the two, so you had Bear and then Bay, Bay Motor, I think there were two options there, right, there was a complete rebuild, which that was option one that came in a little bit hot, I mean, that was
Yes.
Twenty, was it twenty-seven thousand?
And that's for that brand, that type, that motor that was in there.
Okay.
This is alternative with a new motor and all, compatible to what we have.
Okay, and so there, did Bay Motor, did they give two different, did they, two different options as well?
I don't know if you have it, but they, they did list both motors in the bid I had seen originally.
Twenty-three, one eight six.
Oh, yeah, twenty-three, one eight six, that's I'm assuming for the complete rebuild?
Yeah.
What's that, what's the ten thousand nine seven five, is that just breaking it?
Yeah, ten seven nine three five plus seven fifty plus seven fifty.
That, that, that's for the motor itself. And then you got some added charges on there as well, and I think it's both broke down like that.
Total was twelve, four seventy-five through.
Hundred dollars something like that.
Through Bay Motor winding.
It's a little over a hundred dollars, a hundred twenty-five.
Yeah, it was close.
Bear's the one who's been working on it in the past and done some stuff with it already.
So are we accepting Bear as the best, but they're not the lowest?
No, they are the lowest.
They're low, so they're the lowest and, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, lowest and best. According to the recommendation.
So I believe Bay Motor winding is twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-five, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And Bear is twelve thousand three hundred and fifty-eight?
Yes.
That's all.
Okay.
Okay, um, so who, who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, motion by Councilman DeSalvo to uh, approve Lois and Best quote for the purchase, for the new pump for, for the Turner Street Lift Station from Bear Electric in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, have a second?
Uh, Zimmerman seconded, I think.
Uh, uh, it's a second by Zimmerman, uh, no more discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Aye.
Aye, uh, fi- uh, motion passes five to one. Uh, motion to approve reappointment of Casey Favre to the Bay Wavens School District for a five-year term. Uh, just to give y'all some background, I filed for a uh Attorney General's opinion, came back, as long as Mr. Favre does not receive any pay or reimbursements, then he is legal to serve. And I think I distribute that to everybody.
Yes, I think Caitlin sent that out for you, I appreciate you looking into that, um, and with that finding coming back, I'd go ahead and make the motion that we reappoint Mr. Casey Favre to the school board for his five-year term.
We have a motion to approve the reappointment of Casey Favre to Bay Wavens School District for a five-year term, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Zimmerman, any discussion? No discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Aye.
Nay. Uh, let's see, passes six to, fi- four to two, my adding's a little bit off.
Through glasses.
What's that?
I said through glasses.
I'm telling you, they scratched up. Uh, let's see, item D, motion to approve final plat for Shieldsboro subdivision, phase two A pending receipt of a maintenance bond. Um, do y'all want to address this? Yeah, go ahead, state your name and address company.
Hey, how you doing, I'm Derek Bullock, I um, work for Hydrantion Associates, we're the designer and structure manager of this project. I live at one one five two nine Hillcrest Road in Gulfport. And uh, so we are complete with construction of this project and we're asking for final plat approval. Uh, one of the pending i- items is the amount of maintenance bond. And so, uh, we've been requesting this maintenance bond amount, developer to secure that for the bank for a couple of months now. And uh, we just got back yesterday on about two hundred and fifty thousand, which is approximately fifty percent of construction. Typically, when we do subdivisions, uh, for example, like in the city of Gulfport, the maintenance bond is five percent of construction. So fifty percent would be, you know, ten times higher than what our neighbors to the east is. Harrison County, Jackson County require five hundred dollars per lot, um, there's other municipalities that may require up ten percent of the structure cost. And so, what I kinda wanna remind you, the, the maintenance bond is if you have any structural or workmanship issues in that warranty period, the developer has to come back out, address those on his own time. Now, in the, in the event that he doesn't or refuses to come out addressing any issues of workmanship, then you can uh, go after the bond at that amount. Uh, this project has been inspected by the city, by the city engineer, you know, we've worked with them to make sure everything's built according to industry standard. So we're not turning over something that it's sight unseen, uh, everything has been tested and approved and passed. So we would ask that that bond be reduced to a normal industry standard, uh, less than fifty percent, something that, that we can, palatable, maybe a, a price per lot or something of that nature. And the, the board has some authority to, to invoke the developer in the future if there ever was a case to arrive. Number one, after you approve the subdivision, you'll start approving building permits for, for the house and stuff. If ever were, there were an issue in the future, uh, you could stop issuing building permits. And we also have phase two B, that's gonna be started hopefully immediately after final plat approval. So with that, that really the third phase pending, I mean, the city's got some structure to make sure if we ever had any, you know, warranty issue, you know, we can address those from time to time. You got any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
So you said?
I'm sorry, the administration?
Yeah, you know, you, you was talking about if we do have any issu- issues, then it would come back on the developer or the contractor?
So, so the developer has to issue the bond. Now, I can only speak for Harrison County, they stopped making the contractor uh, write the bonds because they can go out of it. But if the actual developer issues the bond, then that has more teeth into it, the city or the municipality can go back after, it's a lot easier than the contractor.
So what if he sells them lots off, then who's responsible?
He'll still be responsible, because the, the warranty and the bond will be in his name. And in that case, you would, uh, let's just say, uh, you had a water main break that was due to faulty workmanship, now it's been tested. And he says, you know what, go pound sand, I'm not gonna fix that, well, you don't issue any more building permits that phase, then you go after bonding company, that, he has to pay out of pocket, that, that's a direct fault.
So this is in place while y'all are constructing houses, and then at some point, the city takes over?
So typically, uh, when you approve the final plat, you accept for operation of maintenance, their, their warranty period.
And what's the warranty period?
In this particular case, it's a two-year period. If, if there's any defects, they're, they're gonna show up here.
Where did the, where did the fifty percent of the maintenance bond, where did that originate, where is that?
I have no idea, we just received an email from Jeremy Burke yesterday stating that without, I don't.
Jason, you know?
Yes.
So I believe the, the ordinance has some language in it that talked about, uh, the, the bond amount is set by the uh zoning administrator, uh, or recommended by the zoning administrator. And it does look at defective workmanship, um, for the project, uh, the uh total construction costs according to Derek gave to us was about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars um, of what the city would be taking over as far as maintenance. Um, when we looked at it, when I consider defective workmanship, we have water, sewer drainage, uh, roadways, all that, all the infrastructure that's out there, so we ran some cost estimates to see what it would cost if there was an issue with a water line blowout or uh, storm drain under a road that we had to go in and repair. Um, we still have asphalt that has to be in, uh, installed, uh, final surface course has to be placed, um, I, I believe after a year, I, I think is what we agreed to, but at a year? Twelve months or some, some percentage of the build out, so we took all those factors into account and didn't think it was fair to assess the hundred percent of that bond, uh, or that construction cost. Um, so we, we thought fifty percent would be a good number to protect the city in case they were in a hit.
So he would have to have a bond of five hundred and fifty thousand?
Two.
Or two, or half of this?
Half of that, yeah. And that would be for a two-year period.
And I think with bonds, y'all pay a percentage of it, correct? It's like five percent?
Yes, sir, we're just asking for something that's industry standard, we're not asking for any special treatment or any bending of the rules, uh, we feel like that two hundred and fifty-eight, uh, it's a cool. And, and again, like I said, you know, this developer plans to add more lots to the city and uh, hopefully, you know, have a good working relationship and we want to continue that. So you, you have some teeth to hold this developer accountable up, up to that twenty-four month period.
How many lots is this one?
This is not the full subdivision.
This is.
So what they came and they actually asked on their preliminary plat, they came and they asked two things, if I'm remembering correctly, they asked for a special use district to allow the smaller, the smaller lots, so they didn't have to ask for variances to each lot, so they asked for a special use district. And then they asked for a preliminary plat under old sub, this was under old subdivision ordinances of however many the total lots were, that's the two things they asked for, but what they're asking you to accept today is what they are calling phase one. Which is, I don't, I don't have them in front of me, how many lots?
It's, it's.
Forty-two.
So roughly half, or third?
So, uh, generally, these, these subdivisions are built in phases, uh, wh- what happens is you, you build out a, a phase one, you sell those lots, recoup your finances, and that is able to pave phase two. Uh, phase two, with a conditionally, it's a preliminary plat approval, uh, those future lots have no bearing on what we're doing today. That infrastructure hasn't been built yet, uh, those lots haven't been subdivided yet, we're still working on some, some wetlands issues for that, so uh, that was just a conditional use, you know, in the future, this is what we'd like to do for planning purposes, but, you know, what we're doing here today is approving uh, forty-two lots. It's part of a master plan, and then from there, we could proceed to phase two.
Um, Jason, what's your recommendation, you're the engineer and you've been on top of this, I know Ronnie's been on top of, I talked to him earlier last week.
Was some of the consideration for such a high amount that the, the final asphalt is not installed, and if they didn't come back and do it in twelve or thirteen months, the city would be on the hook possibly to put the final course on?
Yeah, that was part of it, um, I, I think something else to consider too, and, and I don't know Heather, if this applies to these new regulations, um, with the phase two B not being installed yet, you know, there's some, there's some discussion we've had about deferred construction costs, so that you've already approved the, the plat, the, the preliminary plat for that first section, um, and now you're only accepting phase two A, so what happens if phase two B doesn't ever, doesn't ever come? Would the city, would then be responsible to go install those utilities and complete that subdivision since it's already been approved?
No, no, because it's not subdivided.
So that doesn't fall under this? But mainly, it was just the cost of the infrastructure, if anything were to happen, uh, with the water and sewer and the gas, or the roadways, then if there's anything, um, for, for the paving, or the final code of pa- final surface paint.
So what's your recommendation?
I mean, what we've recommended is that the fifty percent, uh, I do believe that there's a, a, an item in there, if the council wanted to reduce that, you know, then you could consider that as well.
Council?
I mean, it sounds like, again, as we discussed, this is up to the zoning administrator, you're taking everything into consideration, scope of work, what could potentially go wrong, I mean, the hope is that we don't have to go after that bond, the hope is that if there's an issue that it is handled, five percent only puts it at twenty-five thousand dollar bond of total construction cost, would that be enough to alleviate some of the issues? Concerns that we could?
I don't think that'd be enough to pave the, the final surface.
Right, so I mean, I, I do appreciate y'all looking and taking into consideration, if something does go awry again, hopefully it doesn't, that we have at least something to cover and minimize the cost to the taxpayers, so I know you guys put every, probably, everything in that equation and look at, trying to see what's the most fair for, you know, taxpayers and then what's reasonable, so.
Anybody else? Okay, um, so I guess we're gonna leave it where it's at, and uh, for fifty percent, and uh, let's see, so is there any other discussion that's needed on this plat map?
I think Doug had asked a question about fire hydrants and went out today and has verified that's fire hydrants, not sure if they were drawn on it or not, they are on it?
We have confirmed it.
Okay, so, I didn't, you know, that was a question Doug had.
Okay, so it's good?
Yeah. I may, just a, a word of, of footpeeping, uh, I, I may have mentioned fifty percent, the actual number is two hundred and fifty thousand is what the city recommended. Fifty percent of five hundred and fifty is not that, so two hundred and fifty thousand is the actual amount that, that they're asking for the bond, not what fifty percent of construction cost.
Construction was what, five fifty-nine, you said?
So the, uh, you said five fifty roughly, so you're looking at a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar bond?
Two hundred, two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Oh, seventy-five?
Yeah, that, that's what I'm trying to.
You went fifty percent, that's why we're saying, city recommended two hundred and fifty thousand, not two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
That, that's correct, it's not a, it's not an actual fifty percent, uh.
And we're not increasing that bond, we're, we're leaving it at two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two fifty.
Yeah, dollar amount, so the bond.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, is there any other discussion on this, on this final plat, so?
I'm good, um.
Jason, anything else on it, everything look good?
Make my. The certifications, when I looked at it today, um, we might have to get uh, some of those plats re- resubmitted, I think there was some language on that certification that was not proper, and I wanted Heather to look at that too, just to be sure I was reading it correctly, but other, just before we sign it and get anything filed, we wanna verify that everything's right.
Okay, nothing to hold up on this?
No, I don't think so, no, we can work, work with that.
All right, if there's no other, there's no other uh, discussions, then uh, I need a motion to approve final plat for Shieldsboro subdivision, phase two A pending receipt of maintenance bond in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand.
Motion.
Uh, motion by Councilman DeSalvo to approve the final plat of Shieldsboro, phase two A pending receipt of maintenance bond of two fifty, seconded by Councilman Lewis, any more discussion? Oh, and just put in there the discussion that about the fire hydrants are in place, so, um, but anyway, that's, if there's any more discussion.
And I did respond to uh, Councilmember Doug for that, to let him know that we want, I put eyeballs on the two new ones that were two existing.
Okay.
And they are on the plat.
All right. No further discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries six zero. Congratulations, I'm, I know this has been kind of a, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, see, motion to spread recess meeting notice of March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four on the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman, uh.
Hoffman.
Hoffman, yes. Long day.
Second.
Second by Councilman DeSalvo, uh, any discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, uh, okay, so we're gonna redistricting discussion.
No, you don't.
And I'd like to introduce to you guys my law partner, Parker Berry, and then Ken Holland, sitting down over there in Reese's Spot, Ken does the, the mapping and Parker and I kinda tag-team the legal, so.
Good to see you all, um, give Ken a second to put it on the screen, and I, what I've done, you should have in front of you, um, what is your, what's called the benchmark map, um, which is what your current boundaries look like, that shouldn't be unfamiliar to you. Um, and then, you also should have a sheet that has the population statistics of your current boundaries, which matches with the benchmark map, and we'll go through this in just a second, Ken, give him a second to get this up, um, uh, which is based on the twenty twenty census, and we've spoken with some of you kind of through this to get some, you know, just general overview, um, and so the hope tonight is that we discuss any questions you have, obviously, um, but to review the benchmark and then review a draft, it's just a draft, um, that hopefully we can get consensus to move forward, um, get your boundaries changed and do force, uh, to get them uh, legal, because first off, you're out of deviation, talk about that in just a second, so, we don't need that necessarily on the screen for the time being, uh, and if anybody needs copies, I have extra but, since you have them in front of you, I'll go ahead and talk about the benchmark just for a second time.
So when you say legal, what does legal mean?
Well, all right, so let's start with that, that's a good question, so uh, every ten years, the, um, the Census Bureau conducts nationwide census to count the population. And uh, the, one of the main requirements of that is to, every state, therefore on down city and county, gets their population counts. And the first thing that we look at is the one person, one vote constitution, make sure that, in this case, your single member districts, you have six of them in an at-large district, that uh, all six districts have roughly the same population, right, it doesn't have to be exact, and we'll talk about that, these numbers here in a second. Unlike congressional maps, they have to be exactly, the same amount of people have to be this district, all four congressional districts, right, they have to be same amount of people in each one of those, but, but for, for legislative maps, state house, state senate, for local maps, county, city, name of school, district, um, we need to be within what's called plus or minus five percent up or down of the ideal population size, that's the first thing, your maps need to be constitutional, one person, one vote. The other thing that's, that's equally as important, um, not more so or less so, is compliance with the Voting Rights Act, which is specific in this case, section two, which protects minority vote dilution, uh, that's just a real general way of, of.
That's your question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and if you're not within that five percent?
If you're over that five percent, if you're, if you're deviation, is there?
Yeah, if you're not within that five percent.
Right, so the, so I think to your question, the easiest way would be just to look at this and just look at an example, so the way, the reason we set plus or minus five percent, um, is because what you do is to make sure you're within, we call it deviation, within the acceptable range for the population, counting for the population, is you take your largest district under your benchmark, and you take your smallest district, and you add it together, and if those are over ten percent, um, then you have a constitutionally suspect uh, redistricting plan, which means basically that you're in violation of the constitutional portion of the vote. So that's why we set the targets at plus or minus, or the goals at plus or minus five percent for each district, because you gotta take the highest and the lowest to add it together. If you're each within plus or minus five, well, you're gonna be under ten total, so, to that question here, if you look at the benchmark numbers, which this is the table in front of you, uh, this is from the twenty twenty census, is what the government gives you, it's what we're, what you think is right or wrong, uh, I've, I've done this all over the state and all over. Uh, what's interesting about this, no matter where you are, right, these are the same requirements, whether you're here or you're in a small town in Oregon, it, it doesn't matter if you have single mem- single member districts, which you do, um, and so, what you do in this instance is you look at your particular wards, and you can see them there on the, the data sheet there. Your ideal population, your total population is nine thousand two hundred and eighty-four, see that on the chart, you take that divided by your six wards, and you get your ideal size of fifteen hundred and forty-seven, so that's the number we're shooting for, right, and to be within plus or minus five percent of that particular number, so again, this is your, this is the, the new numbers from twenty twenty, overlay it onto your current boundaries, and so you can see by district or by ward, all six, um, of the, all six wards of the, the population breakdown and some of the demographic data as well. Uh, you can see here that the largest populated district or, or ward is, is Ward Four, and it's up thirteen point twelve percent over the ideal size, so it's too large, right? So Ward Four just inherently tells you here, like you got, it's got a shed population, it's too. The smallest populated district or ward in this instance is Ward Five, down eight point nine two percent, so it's too small, right? And it needs to gain population, and then you can look at the other ones as well, um, that, that certainly indicate what needs to happen for those wards, but what you do, take the largest and the smallest, so that's gonna be wards four and five, add them together, and you get that number towards the bottom, the twenty-two point oh four, which is the relative overall deviation, and as I mentioned earlier, that's over ten percent, so right off the bat, it just tells you you have to redistrict, uh, your population is out of line, right, you name whatever the reason is, it's not uncommon, most have to redistrict, sometimes you don't, you get a static place where not a lot in or a lot out in the prior decade, and so they don't take the afterred district from constitution.
So what have you been out for years?
Doing out?
What have you been out for years?
Yeah, out of deviation for years?
For years.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, we're, our goal is to get you into, in line.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, and, and the reason I'm asking this, uh, well, thi- this map and the current map that I have on my phone is, is just, is a little off. Th- this paper here and the current map is a little off, uh, but, um, for eighteen years.
As I understand it, yeah.
Eighteen years, we, we've been off.
I think you're talking about your particular ward or just in general the city?
The city.
Yeah, so, I, I don't, I can't speak to what happened post-two thousand and ten, right, so this is something that should be looked at. Yeah, so, I, I don't, I can't speak to what happened post-two thousand and ten, right, so this is something that should be looked at and examined after every census, which is why we're here doing that now, uh, in the past, if you're, were out of deviation, uh, you didn't redistrict, well, I mean, technically, that's grounds for any citizen with standing to file a lawsuit against the city, claiming that you're violating their one post, one person, one vote part of the constitution, so you have to make the requisite defense, or defenses, uh, under that, and then there could be other claims as well, associated with that particular lawsuit, so, that's, that's really hard in, uh, to defend, uh, if you have a constitutional claim, and you didn't redistrict, and you're out of deviation, and you just carry it on, so like, we didn't do anything, we just left these maps, you did nothing, I mean, you technically, or you could be opening yourselves up to a lawsuit from anybody with standing in the same district.
Now, what if we did redistrict, and we were still out of deviation?
I would not stand before you today to offer a plan, I, I, I will not offer as illegal advice a plan to redistrict.
Because we did, after the two thousand and ten, we did redistrict, um, and we were still out of deviation.
I, I was made aware of that, I, I, that, I'm not at all disputing that didn't happen, did or didn't happen, I, uh, in all the, I've done a lot of these, uh, both for state and local governments, and not just in Mississippi, and never have you recommended a plan, um, that would be to redistrict, to then be out of deviation, um, that would be-
We made that recommendation, we would not be providing good legal-
That's right, it's y'all's decision at the end of the day, but it will be against the recommendation of, of your counsel, of both her and myself, um, but, again, that, that would, that's, it's your decision, um, but that would open you up constitutionally, uh, to a, uh, very likely violation of constitution.
Th- th- and, and this is why I'm asking this here, because, I mean, w- we've had legal counsel in the past, aight, and they saw that we redistricted, and we were still out of deviation, and was it left up to the legal counsel, or was it left up to the council and administration?
What?
Because-
Yeah.
The council and administration left it the same, uh, I can basically recall, uh, when we did redistrict, um, Larry was on the, we had another councilman Larry, and he took some of the area, and we were, I mean, we moved the lines and niggled here, and niggled there, and we were still, uh, out of deviation.
Think, would that have been Bobby Capretta at the time?
Yeah.
Wouldn't have been Larry. Had it been Bobby Capretta.
Well, we, we did redistrict, we, we did something when Larry was here, because he took some of Washington Street, uh, where Mike Mayo lives and some of Citizen Street, and we made the lines right down the center of Citizen Street, and then right down the center of St. John Street, when, before-
I've been here since two thousand and seventeen, and we haven't redistricted, so, so I'm trying to think of-
We changed the lines, uh, because, um, I had back over, um, mine actually stopped on Washington, okay, and we included the three circles, we included Mike Mayo, and we went all the way to ninety, uh, we moved those lines, and Larry took Mike Mayo, and then my, my district went back, back over to Citizen, down the middle of the street of Citizen, uh, then I had St. John on both sides, and then it, it went down the middle of St. John.
Did Larry serve one term or two?
One.
One.
One?
Cause the, so what's the census, we're looking at two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, so that-
So we're looking at just twenty-twenty, so we're not looking at ten.
So that, but that term, so you're saying between seventeen and twenty-one, there was-
Yeah, you would have been looking at only the twenty-ten, which are not a flip to what.
Yeah. And, and that, I mean, they have not, I, like I said, I've been here since twenty-
Maybe it was that midterm, mid, the two thousand fifteen?
Yeah, you can do it at any time, so I, I don't know.
We did redraw those lines.
Do we know when the last time we did it, what the actual date, I know it's a ten census, but-
I mean, I, I was under the impression that it was after-
I thought it was on previous council.
It was, yeah, cause I, you've never-
You were on the council when y'all redistricted, I thought.
Yeah.
Thirteen or fifteen or something?
Yeah, you've never redistricted, have you?
No, I'm at large.
Yeah, but you've never heard of redistricting process?
No, no, I have never, I don't remember, no.
Yeah, and so-
I haven't either.
And you, Gene hasn't.
We all have long things.
Ken is, Ken is remembering somewhere, it's probably two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, when he was last involved.
That's modest.
And that would be, I mean, that sounds about-
We could follow the two thousand and ten census, like we are.
Yeah.
It's about right.
Thirteen would have gotten to the seventeen council when we came on in seventeen.
Yeah, so y'all, y'all, y'all would have registered to run in the begin, January of seventeen, right?
So, when was the mar- um, was twenty-twenty-one the last election, then twenty-seventeen?
No.
When was the last municipal election for the expensive, just trying to go back to the-
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, so then twenty-one, twenty-seventeen, twenty-thirteen would have been, okay, so my, my point in that is, that the twenty-ten census would have come out in March of twenty-eleven, which is plenty of time, would have been plenty of time for the city-
It had been done before the-
The twenty-thirteen election, yes, it would have needed to have been done prior to the twenty-thirteen, but, so Ken's right, it's probably twelve or thirteen. That'd be in twenty-twelve, probably.
I don't recall splitting anything up some stuff.
And if y'all did something since then, I don't, that's certainly not-
Yeah, we-
Nothing I recall.
Yeah, we did, uh, split that and moved my lines from Washington over to Citizen, and gave Larry, uh, because several times I had to mention to him, um, that, uh, that's not my area anymore, Larry, that's your area, several times.
Well, I, this was the map that we were-
I had that, cause look, I'm just gonna tell y'all very, very straight, if y'all were trying to do something, my first co- phone call would have been to Parker Berry, and so I do never remember to- Yeah, it, it has not been since seventeen, and I don't-
No, this would have been before your, well, Larry, yeah.
And even if you were-
Larry was seventeen.
If you were drawing maps, that man over there, even in his prior life, when he worked for Gulf Regional Planning, did all of your maps, so, I, I, I guess what I'm saying is, if you, if you did something, I don't know who did it for you.
Yeah.
Because Ken would have had to go in and adjust all of your maps, and, and-
You would have drew those maps?
He would remember, if you tried to do something mid, if you redistricted, and then essentially what I'm hearing is changed another district, Kim would remember that, cause that would be a very unique and odd situation, so, that, yeah.
To redistrict and then do it again prior to a census.
Yeah, so, anybody who deals with redistricting, if something like that came up, would remember it, because it would be such an isolated, odd occurrence.
Did you maybe lose that?
Hmm?
When they did the redistricting, whenever it was, and twelve maybe did it from, from, you know, the body at the time?
Well, I remember Larry was on the board, because, uh, we, we, we drew some lines, and, um, wha- what's, what's the guy right there on the corner, he, he passed away, um, Doctor Martin Oliver, yeah, see, all that was in my district, but when we moved those lines, it went to Larry's district, Mike Mayo was in my district, which lives right, when we moved the lines, we moved it right in back of that ditch, the big drainage ditch, it went to Larry, and mine cut across, and, uh-
I, I mean, I thi- I think, Councilman Reed, I think what you're talking about is the, the lines that we-
Currently have.
That are on this map, on our current benchmarks, that were done the last time you, you guys redistricted, so I think what you're talking about is, is factual, I think that was, that's exactly, that's, I, I think what you're talking about is the split ward, or-
Can I split?
Split census block.
Yeah, is this not, i- it sounds like it, the split census block.
It sounds like the split census block.
That's, that's-
Two thousand and fifteen.
Yes, that, when we get to this draft map that we are, I don't wanna say proposing, but we are suggesting that you put the whole block back in, but anyways, it's right here, that's the, is this not what you're, Mr. Reed, talking about, uh, it's, I know it's hard to see over there, so, y'all feel free to go and look at the screen, but-
Yeah.
That's Citizen, and then it, and then honestly, it runs along the parcel, it's not even the street.
This makes what you're sa- I mean, what you're saying adds up, and look, we have sat there in, in meetings, time and time again, and tried to figure out why this was like that, what we can recall, or what we've been able to figure out, is that that, maybe they went and did some sort of sampling, um, and basically split this block, because what, I can't, I, I need a, I need a doodad.
A clicker.
A clicker, yeah. Where Ken's, well, where he was at.
Yeah, he's gonna highlight the block, well, no, Ken, if you could, oh, boy.
Okay, like over here.
That's, alright, there you go, that's one census block.
This is where Michael Mayo, he lives somewhere around here, and so this is the end of Washington, that block is out, that block currently is in-
Four?
Ward four, so this, this whole triangle is one census block, right now, this part right here-
The green.
The green.
Is in your ward.
Is in Ward three.
Right, cause we kept those three circles there.
And this block right here is in-
Four.
Ward four, what Parker is explaining is that it's very hard to justify splitting a census block like that, so what you do is you keep all your census blocks together, um, there's no rhyme or reason as to how they come up with these census blocks, they're normally on streets or section lines or-
Yeah, this- This is given by the Census Bureau, and we can show you, there's, there's, I mean, Ken can kick on, there's another, like, those are census blocks, some are very nice and clean on streets, most are usually-
Some are bad.
They're usually drawn on physical boundaries, that, the, invisible boundaries, that you can see, the Bureau does, they draw them on streets, streams, bridges, roads, that block, so go back and take those, they're all census blocks, you can see some of them pretty funky looking, that one right there is, is, it has a large population, like a hundred and-
Sixty-eight or something.
Hundred and seventy-ish people, we can look at it in a minute, and it was split, it is split currently.
So I think that's what you're talking about, is under the last redistricting, it, it was split into two different blocks.
And still is currently split, when we look at it, the proposal or suggestion is to put that block whole for two reasons, one, you need population, you're, you're underpopulated, or, three, it's two, uh, we avoid splitting census blocks at all possible, i- if we can at all possible, the only way really to do a s- a split census block, when you split it, we have no idea, the data at the computer, the Census Bureau doesn't tell us where those people live, right, it just assigns all hundred and seventy to that block, so when you split the block, well, how do you know who goes where, right, the only way, real way to do it is you actually have to go out and do a physical survey, you have to knock on the doors, and ask the people, you know, how many people live here, right, and what's your race, I mean, I, I mean, that's just maybe obvious, but-
Basically, you have to do, you have to perform your own census, would be-
That's, that's right.
You have to go out and do your very own census.
And so we could talk about that, but again, we try to avoid, then, you, you know, if it's your building, somebody does, or they state, they sign an affidavit swearing out that to the best of their knowledge, what they believe to be in that block, so, we, if we can, we try to avoid that for a, a lot of reasons, not least of which is the burden that requires to do, additionally, um, sometimes there's just not good justification for splitting the census blocks, it raises, it raises issues and red flags as to why they split this block, is it for racial reasons, again, from a legal perspective, race has to be considered under section two of the Voting Rights Act, but it cannot be the predominant main requirement, uh, in redistricting, otherwise, that's an unconstitutional racial dream, so, it's this tension that we live in between, um, of having to consider under the Voting Rights Act, so, it'll be easier to look at this in just a second, we put up this other map, but I think that that sounds like, what it currently looks like is what you were talking about. Right. We just gotta zoom in to kinda see, it's kinda hard to see it on this, this paper. Alright, so, uh, and again, just like Mr. Reed was asking, anytime you got questions, just feel free to stop, understand, and just ask, but that's the point of this, to make sure, my job and our job is to make sure y'all are informed, it's y'all's decision to make at the end of the day, this is y'all's map, I, we got, got no skin in this game, other than making sure that you adopted legal plan, other than that, and helping you along the way, that's, that's the goal here, um, alright, so this is the benchmark, we looked at the numbers from your benchmark plan, tells you which wards we need to make some changes to, up or down as far as population, and then we need to be mindful again, um, of your minority population, specifically for Ward Three, is that, uh, while it's not a majority-minority district under your plan, it has a significant portion of minority population, so we wanna do the best we can to try to, to keep that, um, at a-
And, and real quick, let me just stress the importance of that, um, because I've heard that several times, we need to keep our majority-minority district, we don't have a majority-minority district, and I think that's important to point out, just because you will get questioned about that, so I wanna make sure that you all understand that, that, that we currently do not have a, a majority-minority district.
Which means over fifty percent, if you look at your benchmark numbers, which is this right here, um, and again, this, these are, these are close to the numbers, but it doesn't account for the actual split there, but, but you can see the number we're looking at if you loo- look at Ward Three.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, when you say we do not have a majority-minority district, uh, because of the numbers, um, okay, the numbers that we have on here, six fifty-four, six fifty, adds up to thirteen oh-four, what happened to the other one hundred and eleven?
Oh, they're, that's just white-black, so it's, it's, uh, other population, which can be other, certainly other-
Minority.
Minority population can be, yes, and so under the-
So why aren't they included in here?
Well, we're just looking at, for the purposes of the Voting Rights Act, we're looking at the majority-minority race, in this instance, it's black, so, but you, you can look at it if you wanna see the break in.
I mean, aren't they minorities?
They are minorities, but under the Voting Rights Act, it looks at a single minority for purposes of a minori- a majority-minority district, right, so fifty percent of a single minority, so in this instance, fifty percent black, that's the main composition of the minori- that's the main minority group, certainly there are other minorities on the coast, more so than other areas of the state, for sure, uh, you have, uh, a number of Asian population down here, and it may be, that may be what some of this, we think it's at a hundred and eleven, whatever the difference is between the two, but for the Voting Rights Act, we're looking at the majority-minority race, in this instance, that's black, and that's black in all of Mississippi, unlike Texas, you got black, and you may have Hispanic, depending on where you are, right, um, and so, yes, you can add the minorities together to get what's called a coalition district, over fifty percent, but from the Voting Rights Act, that's not a, that's not a requirement, right, so in this instance, we're just looking at, at black, and so the number, just so, it's a great question, just so we're, we're clear, it's the far-right column, uh, the header says eighteen percent, eighteen plus, APBLK, that stands for any part black, uh, eighteen or older, right, cause we're looking at voting age population, which is eighteen or older, and any part black, so you could be on the census, you could identify as one fiftieth, I mean, it doesn't matter, that's what, so that counts, so, the number for the voting age of any part black is forty-six point eighty-nine percent, so, close to fifty, but not quite there, um, that doesn't change what we're trying to do, right, we, we wanna be mindful of that number, um, and we are, uh, in, in what we'll look at here in just a second, uh, but that's why she was saying, there's technically not a majority-minority district, there's not, or ward, there's, there's not, uh, in your benchmark plan, but it's close, and certainly, um, a strong opportunity to elect and continue to elect the minority candidate, whoever that may be, whether it's Mr. Reed, it could be somebody else.
Park, can you just clarify?
Sure.
So in terms of the deviation, I know you arrive at that based on your highest-lowest, and also, are you taking into consideration, I know we talked about the five percent deviation, are you taking into consideration the voting eighteen plus, or you just-
No, sorry, great question, again, this is, this is, this area of law is, is, can be convoluted and complicated, just literally just spent an eight-day federal trial on, on this type of stuff, um, you are looking at total population for deviation.
Okay.
Under the Voting Rights Act, you're looking at voting age population.
Gotcha.
So distinctions, great, great question, y'all could do this without me here soon, um, any questions on the benchmark before we turn to the, just a, just suggested proposal, and, and I, before we put it up, I think y'all are aware of this, you've already seen it, this is dynamic, like, some of the stuff is just what y'all wanna do, right, it's local concerns, political, whatever, y- you could draw thousand maps, right, cause it's by census blocks, so what we're gonna put up is just through some conversations that we've had, we've been told about some things, we just looked at, trying to balance, some of it is just our own suggestion, but it may not take into account some personal opinion that y'all may have, and that's the point of this, right, um, and so what we'll put up is a map that is legal, legally defensible, uh, but doesn't necessarily mean it's what y'all have to do, right, and again, um-
Y'all have papers on it?
I do not, I did not bring that, cause it may change, and I don't wanna confuse, it's hard to see too, um, that's right, I didn't wanna confuse it, so what's on the screen, uh, again, the shaded colors, the color, the maps, is the current boundaries, or is the current boundary for each ward, okay, the red line, or the, 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 yeah, red liner, it'll be green if he highlights a particular ward, is what is being, again, I, you can call it whatever you want, draft, proposal, just through discussions, this is what we're, we're offering, that can certainly be changed, the numbers, you can, uh, the little tags that are on each, um, ward, that's the ward number at the top, and that's the deviation below, okay, and then, and then up there on the screen, again, I'm, y'all may have to get up, just go look at it if you want to, you can see all the, to Mr. Reed's point, he, he's got all the data up there, so if you wanted to see the age of population, you could, you could, we could easily pull that up, um, but the main thing he's got highlighted is your minority, or your black population, eighteen up there, so, um, why don't we, and you know, again, y'all just stop me at any point, just trying to, to move this along for discussion purposes, why don't we start maybe with six, and work our way kinda back down towards, uh, the direction of where we are at, so-
Nothing's really changing up.
And there's not much changing, if you look at six again on the benchmark, and that's why I wanted y'all to have this, so he doesn't have to toggle back and forth much, um, six was, was within deviation, it was one point six eight percent, we took a little bit out there, that little notch.
Can you blend an area up?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, send to Rose Street?
Sure, yeah, cause zoom in there, Ken, keep going. Yeah, can zoom in there, Ken, keep going, looks like it's, uh.
And Josh, especially where, where you count something coming in handy, if there's something, if there's something that cuts or there's something geographically quirky enough, that's a lot of that.
Yeah, I know, y'all may just have to, uh, when it's your turn, or if you're interested in somebody else's following, because again, this is, you know, I think y'all are getting the picture, there's, there's a lot of things you could do here, and it really deducted a perfect thing. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's a whole lot of population there, maybe, I think if I recall, maybe twenty people, something small, it's really small. What you got, Ken?
Thirteen.
Thirteen people. So that proposal, or this current proposal, or this current draft, would just take those thirteen people and gives them to five, if you recall, five is down almost nine percent, and so. Satellite view? Ken, shove that up there.
I'm sorry.
Thank, can you do the satellite? Yeah, no, he only can do that when he's got the. Yeah, sorry.
She's the gatekeeper.
Uh, we could, you probably like look on your phone. What, uh, Ken, is that a main, kind of run north-south, uh, approach? The road, say that? Yeah, so that's one census block highlighted, yeah, you can see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And most of those, uh, the people that live back there are out of towners on prim roads.
You can see the census block shape, it's funky, you know, so like, there was not like pick and choose, it was that and the block.
Census block going up on that little strip up there as well?
All that, the one that's all red, that's all one census block, so. Yeah, and. Okay. So that, and again, that's not a big deal, you, look at that, for instance, click on that, just so they can see how crazy some, that's one census block. And sometimes you're just stuck with what they give you. Um, and when you get into areas where you got a lot of, like y'all do down here, streams, creeks, bays, rivers, they get a lot of people. Alright, so that, see, that was that easy, so we able, we just put that back, the other one, that corner has zero population, I think, yeah, because it's, you're back at one-six-eight, which is what you are on the benchmark. So that's, again, that's why I'm saying, like, it just doesn't, that's where the local, the local knowledge is helpful.
Yeah, and it don't really connect in the other.
Yeah. So that's six, um, uh, basically no change, except for that little triangle, which doesn't have any population in it, and I don't even know, maybe we were just trying to clean up that or something, I can't, I don't recall, um, that, so then.
Yes, mostly just wetlands and.
Yeah, yeah, and you're, and that's the same case for some areas when you get up into one and five, which we're about to look at. Any questions, Mr. Sol, on, anymore on six coming in?
That's it.
Okay. Let's look at, uh, I guess we'll just, just go five, um, directly to the east, Mr. Zimmerman, so this, you were down about nine points, so needed to gain population. And pretty significant population, so, yeah, that's it under the benchmark, and Ken, they got them. So, couple, couple areas of changes here, so let's start on the north part of five. So where to get population for five, so.
Five's a funny animal because of where its location, and even when it wraps around by the casino, it gets into the Cedar Point area, but it's not, I mean, I guess it is connected technically through parts of the, the, um, through Inman and Hollywood Boulevard, through the casino. But you're limited by three, you're limited by two, because two needs to grow, three needs to grow, so you really only have four and one to take from when you start looking at Ward Five.
And let me also mention that, and so that's what we did, so we went into one, one.
Also got a shrink.
That's right, one was, one was large, one needed to shrink. And it's like, well, why didn't you just go in the middle right there in one, along, I can't, the Blue Meadow, somewhere, well, you, if you look at the census blocks, they're heavily popu- all those are heavily populated, three hundred, two hundred, one hundred and fifty, so it wasn't doable to take any of those, because they're too largely populated with the deviation. Yeah, one of them neighborhoods. So the way to do it was to go over across the top and kind of dip down to that Cedar Point area, which is what that. Which is what that kind of doe does on the north. The other area that we took a little bit of population from, Ken, go into, I think it was out of four, a little bit. Yeah, it had about thirty, I think, right there around, zoom in, it's about Victoria, one block, once, one block there, thirty to forty people, if I recall. Yeah, that, that street would split, you know, you, that's common, right? Take half, that's right, you gotta split it somewhere, I mean, don't split it, but you gotta align, you run to the center. Which doesn't really matter for cities, it matters a lot for counties, because they're always squabbling over the, who has the road mileage and who's going to maintain that street, well, they gotta just. That's right, yeah, it's Victoria right there, so the south half would continue to remain in four, and the north half of Victoria, along with, uh, that Turner, along with the east side of Turner, uh, just right there, Victoria would go to.
What is that, what is that, you said sixty-eight?
Population? No, it's, I think it's around forty, you click on it, Ken. What is the number, can you just tell me?
Thirty-six.
See?
Thirty-six.
So thirty-six people, um.
Seven, and then seven to the east of it. So forty-two people total.
Oh, is it two blocks?
This and this.
Oh, okay, I got, yeah, it's two census blocks, so yeah, a little forty. But not a significant number, but, but enough certainly to help shore up some of the population, um, for five. And so what this proposal does is that you can see there at the deviation, it gets five point nine seven percent down, it's about a little less than a point, which is, which is good, we got that fluctuation again, plus or minus five. Um. Any questions on five? From anybody? Yeah. Okay, well, we, we can always come back, again, this is dynamic, and we're just kind of going through it. Uh, we'll talk about one, I know Mr. Seal's not here, but we talked with him about this prior, uh, or at least we've looked at this in that, that discussion. He had to shrink, the only changes, I shouldn't say the only, the changes to him is what we just discussed in five. We also took in that pink portion right there on ninety, that is no population there, it was just to clean that up, it was like, it was kind of funky that that went across, or two went across. I think so, but if. But if you wanted it, I mean, that's what I'm saying, it, it's just a.
Had one, but that, that area is going to impact more residents of Ward One, so I figured we're at the Ward One.
Clean cut too.
Yes, it's a nice boundary. One's, you know, one still needed to shed some population, um, and so I know it looks kind of funky, that little, that jog to the north of ninety there, uh. To get it. Yeah. Yes, large. So you can see though, it still is up one point eighteen percent, even with giving five that chunk, and then even with giving, uh, two, that little, that dock that's worth, which, which I think's twenty, about twenty-something people maybe?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, it's not a whole lot of people.
Where's the yacht club and, and.
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's all land there.
And Second Street was split, it was split on Second Street.
Okay, so that's Second. Any questions on one? Alright, let's look at two, we just went over a little bit of that, right, cutting off the commercial area, you know, cutting off a clean line there on ninety, adding in that portion, I guess, towards the yacht club, is that fair to say? Okay, you are the locals, not me. Uh, in the end, the only other change is this one census block here on north of Keller Street, um, and it has, how many people, you know?
Fifteen?
Fifteen people, so, you know, two was down, uh, within deviation, but when you start moving things around, you got, it's just apparent, everybody gets a little bit something, it was four point nine one percent. So it had room to grow, and, you know, we, we helped it a little bit by that area in one, in this block here, so it's still down, but it's obviously well within deviation, I think it's two point five nine percent, which is fine. Not very many, not major changes there, um, and I realize that comes out of you, but it's a small, you have to shed population too, so, uh, the main, we'll get, we're getting to that here in just a second, where the main piece is. Okay, then coming on down around, let's look at four, we just, since we already talked about it, it's that block on Keller that, that goes out, it's that block on Victoria that goes up to five, and then the main change, and this is where three and four really kind of the conversation at the same time, but this is it, is that. Now, we talked about this a little bit earlier, this is a hu- this is a large block, hundred and seventy-some odd people in this whole block, and this block has been split, or I don't know when it was split, but it, but the prior cycle it was split.
It's the bottom line, Old Spanish Trail.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
North side, Old Spanish Trail to Subey Street.
So our proposal is to put that whole block, three needs to gain population, four needs to lose population, was to put that whole block in three, that's the only change to three. If you look at the rest, all the lines are the same. Now, there's, there's some tweaking that, you know, there's some things you could do to three, to, um, tweak for the black population a little bit, and we can talk about that, but that's going to be up to y'all and what Mr. Reed's desire is, but this current draw, Ken, I can't, tell me what the APB app.
Forty-five oh two.
Forty-five oh two, the benchmark was forty-six eight, but it was underpopulated. Now, this gives a deviation for three, and we'll talk about four too, I'm not leaving you, just so we're on it, um, this gives a deviation of two point three percent up, so there's some census blocks we could shave off that could perhaps increase your black voting age population.
Are you talking about Washington to Central around Citizen?
The southeast portion, yeah, up in there.
So you, you're taking those people out?
Right now, they're staying, they're in.
I, no, no, but if you take them out, how many people are you taking out?
Um.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven people.
But up to seventy-seven.
It's, it's.
What is that, what would that percentage go?
Um, it, I think it's, in looking at this prior, it goes up to, what is it, Ken?
Forty-seven and a half, almost forty.
So it would be a two and a half percent increase in your black voting age population.
Higher than what it is now.
That's exactly right, or under what it is on the benchmark.
And that would, it would still put four under, well, under the five percent deviation.
Yeah, you're at three point four nine percent with that change.
Heather, I was just thinking, they may have split that box like that, because Bobby was in that ward.
Yeah, we had talked about that, and that's.
That's why Reed may have picked up on the other side, but not that section.
Yeah, so previously, uh, we had two councils that were the same, or the same census block today.
Which would justify an explanation for split the block.
Yeah, that's.
So that's one of the, you know, that, that makes sense, not having that.
Yeah, Bobby was four and lived in that census block, there, and he couldn't go himself out of his own block.
Bobby had.
So that's just a, that's just an alternative that we just, you know, if you wanted to increase, I'd suggest increasing it if you wanted to, because you could, um, if I'm looking at those three blocks there, that still keeps all the wards, three and four, what we're talking about here, within deviation. That's really between you two councilmen, the chalices.
Have a minority, a majority?
No, it gets it to forty-seven, eight, I, there's just, we've looked at this a lot of ways, I, there's just no way to get it. No, we, we couldn't find a plausible way to get it to be over fifty percent, it's not currently under, over fifty, certainly, we're looking at, just all, you know, that's part of the op, the, the, the scenarios we're looking at, and this helps get, get that, you know, consistent with what the benchmark is, and even actually a little bit better. Again, that's a personal problem, yes, sir.
I, uh, did, did a great job explaining, you know, it's just considered the black population to reach the fifty percent.
Sure.
Okay, um, my question is, is that written in stone, or is that the spirit of the law?
Uh, that's what the case law says, except that's what you're asking, but if you want to see what the minority, the total minority popu- we can look at that.
No, no.
Just a second.
That's case law, it means it's written in the law, it's written into judicial case law.
Yeah, that's, that's the legal requirement, um.
So can I go give you se- that, Section Two of this act, no, but that's the case law, that's cases that are interpreted, those regulations, that's what the case law does.
Okay, that, that's what I wanted you to do, if you can give me those case laws.
Sure, yeah, I can't give it to you currently, but.
Right, I, I understand that.
I don't know that well, but yeah, we can, we can get you there.
Because I just wanted to know, was it written like that, or?
Yeah, and it's, it's what's called a coalition, that's right, and it's what's called a coalition district, when you pool together minority populations of all types to get over fifty percent.
Right.
And the Voting Rights Act, and that's certainly, there's stuff about that, and that's fine, you, you can do that, and in fact, that probably does this, I would be curious to know, we could look at it, the. Well, maybe not, you know, we, we could see what the other minority population would add to it, um, to be over fifty, but technically, from the Voting Rights Act, that's not necessarily considered a majority district, uh, of a single race. Um, but I'd be glad to, to send you the Fifth Circuit case law, which is the circuit we're in on, um, on that. It is what's called an opportunity district, which means, you know, you're at upper forty percent, it's, it's, it's an opportunity for a minority candidate to elect, a minorities to elect a candidate for choice, which clearly is happening, because you've been elected, uh, in this particular ward, and this will continue to be an opportunity, uh, district or opportunity. So again, that's, you know, those three blocks on the southeast corner, um, that's y'all's, you know, it's up to you, it's up to you, y'all's decision on that. Sure, the specific block?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ken, can you zoom in on that? Citizen, third.
Hancock, Citizen.
And look, feel free to, can you take a minute to maybe look at the satellite map?
That's south of the tracks, or?
Yes, south of the tracks, through the Alana, right there.
That's right, um.
Tommy Green.
Tommy Green splits the street.
Right, he's going to sit at the corner of Citizen. So that Sycamore would, uh, that's south of the track, okay, would that include both sides of Sycamore, or just?
Divides it in the middle, runs along the middle street.
Yeah, so you'd still have Nor, Sycamore. If you went with that.
Because, um, you say, okay, splits Sycamore down the middle.
Yeah, you have the wind, the wind is divided.
So you're still, you're still going to lose some minority in that.
Well, not, not according to the, not according to the census data, there's, there's, just speaking frankly, there's like zero in one of those and one in the other, there's almost no minority population. If you look at that block, I'll just tell, it, it, that's what I'm saying, you may disagree, so you may want to keep it, I get it.
They may not have filled out their.
Yeah, I, I disagree, there's, uh.
And that's fine, and that's why it's important for y'all to say that.
When you're giving, um, because you're losing Tom, Tom Fall, you're losing, uh. Yeah, you're losing Tom, you're losing Rose Lewis, um.
Would you be losing?
There are two in this, right here, you lose two. Two, yeah, so there's two minorities in that.
On third?
One, he's circling, according to the Bureau, but again, look, you know your constituents, you know where they live, we're stuck with the numbers. We're stuck with the numbers, but if, if that's a reason to keep those in you, then that's y'all's decision.
Well, we, we're just looking at it tonight.
Yeah, that's right, you can make that decision. We don't, we're not, not asking you to commit to anything, although we will need to know at some point in the near future.
So, um.
What's the deadline?
There's not one. Well, when's your next election, next year?
Are, are you finished?
That and then, well before then. We need to get this done, and to your circuit clerk, yes, the next couple months, two to three months.
Can we look at that triangle again?
Yeah. Go back up there, Ken.
Just for the record, that they have called multiple times, just asked me for an update, where are we?
I'm sure they have.
Informed them where we are.
And because we're here and it's fresh on your mind, I'd hate for us to go months and like, you know, you don't even remember what's going on or what we did. So, I, you know, preferably, we'd like to leave here.
Can you make it bigger? Can, can you make it bigger?
Yeah, examine.
Parker, what is that, what's the standard of, or, I guess, what's the return rate on the census, meaning?
Oh, huh. Uh, you know, they have, uh, it's amazing the amount of data they collect and all kind of stuff that you can look at. From, from economic, socioeconomic status and all kind of stuff. And they probably, I haven't looked at, they probably have some margin of error.
Yeah.
I know they have it on what it is for the twenty twenty census, I honestly hadn't looked at, because it doesn't, it, you're stuck with it. There's a process, you can go by like appealing it, but it's very high bar for them to come out and do a recount, and then you have to foot the bill. So, um, yeah. I don't, is that helping at all? I don't know, Mr. Reed. Yeah, I mean, you know, that, you got it either in the mail, or you got it via email, you know, I mean, I, and then they, they figure for people who don't report, and they, they have a formula where they calculate.
So. So, that, that line there, is that Old Spanish Trail?
Yes.
So, you're talking about taking it to Pecan Park?
No, it's, it'd be in the south, so South would stay.
So, this would be where Jason lives.
Jason.
Kind of C, and it splits CB.
Turning up back by like.
Splits it up. You know, the previous, you can see the, the color difference there between the two, the green and the beige. Uh, the, and that's, that's of course the area where it would split the, the block, but the bulk of that split is along a parcel lot, like it's not even.
How many minorities do they have in that, that?
Total?
In that, uh, trying.
Hmm, I think it's fifty, somewhere around that range, yeah. I have the one seventy, it's, or the one, whatever the number is, it's fifty something. About a third.
So, where did he live?
Ha, somewhere in there. That's the problem when you split a block out, we don't know where.
Where did he live, Kyle?
Probably at the end of Citizen. A bulk of that's just, I mean, it looks like a big chunk of, but it's a lot of his land, I mean, you have a lot of.
It is, especially in the center, it's all land. I, I don't know.
So, that's, that's what I'm saying, where, where, where. So, they're, they're living where I am? Well, we got the call for sacks in there.
Already, all three of them?
Uh-huh.
But that voting block was split, so they couldn't tell where.
Yeah, I don't know what was done prior, was split. Was a survey done? I don't, didn't see any evidence of one.
Three call, call, call for sacks, Michael, uh.
You may not even be currently getting.
Sheila.
And how it's currently split, I, you know, you, some of the, I don't know, the minority population in this, in this block may, when it was split, some of that may, I'm sure, some of it is no doubt in full. We just don't, I don't, you know, where, wherever it was split. And that was ten, however long, too many years ago.
Citizen, it right now is split on the north side of Citizen.
That's right.
We're right down the middle.
Back in there on the left, isn't it?
We, say that again?
Don't you have a piece of property at the end of Citizen?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right, but.
So, that's in four right now.
Yeah, it's in four.
Mm-hmm.
So, the right side is already on, there's nobody on the left side.
That's, most of that is vacant land.
Get shocked that that census block is vac- is vacant land, in the middle, concentrated. It's kind of along the roads. Yeah, yeah. We can't turn it on because it, he doesn't have internet tied to his computer, but if you, when we have internet, we can actually overlay a satellite image, and it helps kind of look at the rooftops or at the business top, you don't know where they are, right? But can't really do that here. But if you were to do that, you could see that it'll, it's concentrated around the perimeter of the whole, uh, census block, the rooftop, generally.
I, I can't, I can't see a hundred and something.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't see.
It's a hun- around a hun- we'll just call it a hundred and seventy, um, give or take.
I really can't see that in there.
You know, the, as I recall, there's a decent number of rooftops kind of along there. Along Citizens and walking. There's, there's a good bit of rooftops in that area, and then you got some certainly down.
But the one seventy was the whole block?
The whole block.
And that's what I'm saying, half that block's already in his ward.
Well, currently, yes. And we don't know what.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so he keeps.
There you go.
I had an old aerial.
You did. There you go. All right, that, you can see the huge chunk in the center is vacant land, but you can see where all the houses are. They're there, and then they're down as you get down towards Subey. Old Spanish Trail and Subey where they interconnected, north side of Old Spanish Trail, so you can see the house, or the rooftop.
I don't see it increasing in the minority. Probably this is what we started out with.
It's not, well, let me clarify this, Mr. Jeffrey, it's not increasing your minority, it's increasing your population.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's the thing that we all have to remember here in your ward, your ward started out almost eight and a half percent underpopulation. So, you had to gain people. So, you had to take people from somewhere.
Yeah.
So, that's why it makes the most sense to take that triangle, because when you go around, there's not a minority population surrounding you to grab. There's not a minority population, even though you could jump over to try to grab, because you, you grabbed so many other.
You've got the bulk of the minority, the vast majority that's near you, and this actually was a chunk of minority population in addition to other forms, and that's not the only thing we're looking at. So, right, you know, we're also trying to maintain historical shape. There's communities we're trying to keep together, like neighborhoods like we did at the outset, Mr. DeSaville up there, we, you know, might split a neighborhood if we can avoid it. So, but there's a lot of factors at play, but one of which for section two is looking at the minority population, and, and, and in this instance, the constitutional requirement for deviation, you had to gain. And this was the best mix of population to get you within deviation.
This area where that box is up there now.
Where, where you want to go, Mayor?
I want to go up to Washington Street.
Okay. Uh. Yeah, that's Washington, right there.
Where is his line right now?
Uh, it's just south of that, see where Citizens kind of does that little, that little turn? There it is, see?
So, he's got.
Got those houses.
Yeah, I got those.
And he's, I mean, it's exactly what he's talking about, he's a little town like O'Mayo in here.
And, and the last.
But they're drawn on a parcel line.
We made sure we kept Kathy, Sheila, and, uh, the other call for sacks. And if, we went behind them, and then came down the ditch, you know, and gave. That's why I got questions on, how can we deviate for so many years?
Yeah, I mean, look, if this census, it, we're stuck with the block, right? To do a split block, it requires that analysis that I mentioned earlier, otherwise you're just shooting in the dark, just giving you a number that, that's not reality, right? And even then, we're stuck, we're still stuck with just the numbers that are the best, the best option that's out there, but still, there's flaws with it. So. We want to try to avoid, unless there are really good reasons to split the block, we want to try avoid splitting the block. If you had to split it, we would need to do a ser- we don't do it, but you'd have to have somebody do the survey. Which gets a little bit complicated when you think about what you're asking these people, um. So, and, and the biggest thing is that you needed population, and this accomplishes that. Uh, in consideration of the other factors of what all the surrounding census blocks around your ward, composition of those two.
And Parker, that's what, um. I guess that's, that's still my question, um, is we, we live with deviation, um, so long. And, and matter of fact, you, you with, uh, the planning, uh, southern region, right?
I, I, I used to work with Gulf Regional Plan.
Gulf Regional Plan.
Yes, sir.
He's out on the town, retired. He's publicly retired, privately employed, how about that?
Yeah.
So, you're, you're the gentleman we talked with on the phone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, put a face with it, voice, alright. Um, so, so the deviation's so long. Um, and, uh, I would like to s- I, I, my thing is, I would like to see the maps before we redrew them. Uh, because from my recollection, you know, we've always tried to keep that ward, that ward was small. Uh, and, and when did five and six came in, when? Uh, in?
Seven maybe?
I think nine.
Yeah, seven and nine. Okay, so, so we've been. We've, we've been deviating a long time, and, um. Can a citizen go back and sue?
No, not, not prior, not for prior action. I mean, currently, you're out of, you're out of deviation now.
They can sue you for not fixing.
Yeah, if you didn't fix this by your next election, yes. You, you're wa- opening yourself up to a lawsuit of which, depending on which claims they bring, you're, you're responsible for the legal fees of both them and you. It's hard to defend a deviation.
And quite frankly, we know that the last time they said it was redistricted, it was out of whack. Like, I didn't take the time to figure out why it was out of whack, because. We, at this point, we don't care. My job is to get it.
That's right, that's what we're here to do, so.
And, and I'll, I'll tell you very bluntly, the problem with allowing something to be out of deviation and out of whack so long, is all you're doing is picking a can. One, well, first off, you're running the risk of getting sued and losing, because we wouldn't be able to defend that. And two, you're picking the can to make it harder for whoever's sitting in your chair. Or you, I mean, in this case, you know, there's two of you that's been through multiple redistricting, so it makes it harder when ten years comes around real fast to fix something.
You know, one of the things you also look at, Heather's point, is to try to accommodate, or maybe the growth, we had talked too much about that. Trying to draw some of these districts may potentially make one smaller, under deviation, because you know a lot of growth is going there, or there's a big complex being, whatever, I've done some places. You want to try to com- accommodate that increase in population for that ward, just so it's not so out of whack the next census.
But you still have to accommodate for that within deviation.
That's, that's exactly right, so it has to be within deviation, that doesn't mean say.
So, you can't say, I think people are gonna come here, so we're gonna leave this one a negative seven.
That's right.
You can't, you can't do that. Might have it a negative four point five, still have to have it within deviation. Look, I'm not gonna, I, I have no, and I've told you this, and y'all know, I'm always blunt, to the point that it annoys some of you. I can't justify why two thousand and ten was the way two thousand and ten, all I can tell you is, if I were in that chair, I would.
Here's the other thing, I, it doesn't, I don't know that it, it, it doesn't change. Just for instance, in your particular situation, Mr. Reed, like if you were to leave it, leave it as it is, your ward, like it doesn't, the composition is. You know, we can get, we can get your black voting age population at the same or better, and get it in compliance with deviation. So. Leaving it underpopulated doesn't change the percentage of your black, you know, my point is that we can get your black voting age population similar or better, a little bit better. And get it in compliance with the constitutional requirement. So, leaving it underpopulated, even if that were an option that we would all recommend, doesn't. It does, it's no, it doesn't get you anywhere, if that makes sense, because. If you're doing it to try and increase your black voting age population, just for instance, but, but we can actually do the same thing by adding more population to it and getting it compliant with the constitution, so.
And actually get it higher.
And actually increase it. So, um, it, it makes, it doesn't make any legal sense to under, intentionally underpopulate that particular ward. Because again, we, under section two, we can get the voting right, that we can get the black voting age population at, or higher than what the benchmark.
You know, and I'm, I'm just asking these questions because, uh, you know, uh, you know, frankly, I think we've represented, you know, bought, bought, uh, with all the races. And I think that's why I'm still sitting up here in my fifth term, so, uh, it wasn't, you know, just all blacks, all minorities. Uh, because times that I did have somebody run against me, we won by a big number.
That's right.
Put it that way, so, um, but I'm just asking these questions.
Sure, no, but they're great, they're great questions, and that's exactly right, I mean.
That's why we're here, we want y'all to be comfortable with your maps and your history, and we want to be honest, anyway, that's why we wanted to do this, to give you the opportunity to ask, ask the questions that you are.
Mr. Lewis, we didn't necessarily talk too much about work more, but I think you got a picture of what the, the changes were.
Yeah.
This is the last one to look at.
Well, I know, I mean, just looking at this year, again, the variation, I mean, I.
You know, you got, you got your strength, yeah.
Yeah, so, I know there's gonna be a, a loss there.
Sure.
Um.
Well, look, again, this is, um, you know, this was a draft option that we feel is a good option, it's ultimately y'all's decision to decide on, think on it. Um, we'd be glad to, you know, send down to, to the city, you know, a map, if you want to have something to look at on paper. Um, but I would ask that, we don't just kind of let it linger too long, just because we'll forget, and then we'll be doing this exact same thing and answering the same questions, which is fine. But I don't think that, that'd benefit y'all, um, in getting this done. And then, to the point, the circuit clerk has to, once y'all adopt it, has to take this information and update SIMP and all that, so there's no need to make it.
Maybe we're less than a year away from qualifying.
Yeah, that's right, I guess, I guess it starts in January. So, yeah, so we need to make sure that the circuit, there's no reason to, to dump this on them, you know, later this year, when we can do it here in the next, you know, month or two months. Certainly, outside of that. But, not asking y'all to vote on this tonight, don't even have the order ordinance drawn up, it's just, we've looked at it, think about any questions you may have. Y'all obviously can get in touch with Heather, and get in touch with me, we'd be glad to go through another session with you, we need to, certainly, Mr. Reed, think about. I think those handful of blocks on the, the southern portion, you may want to keep them, that's totally fine. That's, that's y'all's decision, um.
And, Parker, and I think, and just want to preface, because I think it was said, that looking at other areas from Ward four than this, this proposed triangle would achieve. Uh, getting population, but not necessarily.
That's right.
In line with the section two and the voting.
Yeah, looking at any other block outside all surrounding Ward three does not.
Does not achieve any increase in.
Does not. Not of any magnitude. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and that, and that, and you can kind of tell that, you can look at the percentages of the minority populations in the other wards, which they're low, um, so. And spread out across the city, excuse me.
So, on, on Ward three, and you have the, the bottom little cutout right there.
Uh-huh, that's right.
What happens to the, the population there? What district is that?
It would go into four, and that just, it just increases the black voting age population for three by doing that, that little stair step at the bottoms that we were talking about, not the tri. That's right, and we, we're, we, we got deviation room to do that, but again, that's up to Mr. Reed, and I, and I guess also, you know, Mr. Lewis, if, if Mr. Reed wants to keep those three, they're in his ward now, certainly, that's fine. It just, it just tweaks the BVAP a little bit higher, um, which is all that's acceptable. It's at a good number now, but it, it would get it up a, a couple point.
Can you all send us these maps?
Yeah, we can send you a, a copy of, we have the, you have this, I can send you a copy of, we, we can, this proposal, we'll put draft on it. Because last thing we need is, map floating around that we, then we change, and then it gets confused. So, um, by, by all means, that's why I didn't bring a copy of this tonight, just because it's, we already made a change, right? So, um, be glad to do that, so y'all can have that, think on it, and then.
Do you want that changed in the draft?
Yeah, do you, what, what do you want on that? Want to leave it in, take it out? Okay, yeah, we can do that, or I can do this, where.
And that would include the change toward six, about dividing the neighborhood?
We already fixed that.
Fixed that.
Yeah, that's already fixing this. And I, we can do both, we can do it like this, where you have the overlay, it's however you want to do it, where the green is your current, and the red line is the proposed.
We'll already have the current, uh, send me the other two.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll do that, like an A and a B draft, with today's date or something.
This one, Mr. Jeffrey, respond, please, lead us to safety, because the green, uh, can't have it secondary, green is your current district. The brown is House District, and then the red line is what your new district would be. This is this one, Mr. Jeffrey, find the place, clean it up to safety, because the green, uh, like the, can't have a secondary green, because you're perfect district, the brown is a power district, and then the red line is what your new district would be, so this map.
Yeah, it's, it's what we're calling overlay, so you can kind of see the change, the old and the new at the same time, but we can, it right. So we'll send that down, y'all can get a copy, obviously I can send it to you individually, and I'll have your stuff, but we'll send it down, y'all can work through, um, Heather, Mayor's office, Reese, however you want to do it, to get it, and that way I'll think on it, and then like I said, last thing, to put a bow on it, as I already mentioned, just to reiterate, yeah, if we could get, you know, any feedback from you, obviously, Mr. Reed, it'd be helpful, so then we can move to draft, final order, put all the, the data and stuff in there, so we can try to get this through. Sometime in the next month to, two months, actually, so we're not.
Okay.
Um, any other questions?
Got any, anything else? Uh, we got three meetings in April, why don't we set, uh, April thirtieth, that's the last meeting in the month, and vis, visit this back, it'll give y'all a month to get these maps and look at it. Yeah, we got three Tuesdays for three meetings.
No, we don't have two meetings in a month.
Hmm?
We only have two meetings in a month.
Second and sixteenth will be our meetings.
Oh.
We just wouldn't have a meeting.
We're just gonna have a, we're gonna have like a three week break.
Yeah, long break.
Well, here's the, and here's the thing.
Frame break.
It's the thing, areas that you really don't need, I mean.
Yeah, I don't.
Like frankly, the only reason we need to come back to a table like this is if y'all want to have a full blown discussion like this again, so I don't, I don't think at this time we know whether or not we need. A full circuit, because like, for example, Josh, I don't think has a, I mean, Josh isn't, isn't changing at all, um, so yeah, I don't think there's a, a need for a.
Well, you still have to do it.
Send this out to everybody.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, that will do it regularly.
That's right, so I mean, I, as I, as I understand, you're on the same page, we're just, we're, we'll dialogue with Mr. Reed.
I'm just going with what you were saying.
No, yeah, it's good.
I want to go for months.
Yeah, ha, I'm with you, we'll dialogue with Mr. Reed on these changes.
We can, we can do a workshop in April.
I don't know that we, I will defer to the council, but I don't know that you need another workshop, if y'all leave here and everybody's okay with their boards, and we'll obviously get Mr. Reed, whatever he ends up doing, obviously, you know, make sure Mr. Lewis is informed of those yard agreement on, that's pick the block. We then can take it and put it in a final order, which will have to be in a public meeting for y'all, you know, like this.
Yeah, I'd prefer that to be at a regular, like a regular scheduled meeting.
And I'll just be honest, I wouldn't vote for a map that wasn't in compliance.
Second meeting?
Maybe the second. So if it came back out of compliance, that would be a nay.
But, well, you won't have a recommendation.
First meeting in May, Kyle.
I, huh?
Man, I think you, by the first meeting in May, we should be fine.
That's what I'm saying either, second in May, first meeting in May, that would.
Yeah, so we'll.
So y'all want to put this back on the agenda, the first meeting in May?
For final adoption.
Or tentative, yeah.
Tendentive final adoption.
Can you make a note of that?
Anything else?
We could talk about it more in April.
Okay, y'all have questions? Anything else?
I'm good.
Thank y'all, appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It's honestly an open public meeting, everybody could come in, kind in, which is always good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving along, let's see what we got here.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Oh, got it. A motion adjourned, Hoffman seconded by.
Reed.
Reed, uh, vote motion?
Aye.
Aye. Pass six zero, seven zero, no, six zero.
Six zero.